The time being 7:00 PM. The Greensburg City Council meeting is called to order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that we dismiss this meeting and complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. Brenda, please call the roll.
Darryl Poling. Jamie Kane.
Here.
Adam McKenzie, here. Kevin Fleebly. Rick Emswaller.
Here.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from March 1st, 2021. You all should have received those in your packets. Any additions, edits, corrections? If not, we take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Rick is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Old business. Brenda has a second reading of ordinance 2021-2, an additional appropriation.
I don't have anything than what was reported last month. It's up for the second reading.
Any questions for Brenda on that?
I'll make a motion to approve on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Becca, by Etta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. We will move on to new business. Tanya Downey, Executive Director of Main Street Greensburg, is with us this evening for an annual update. Tanya? Good evening.
Can you hear me okay? All right. So, good evening. I'm Tanya Downey. I'm the Executive Director for Main Street Greensburg. And I accepted the position in September and wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself, give a quick update or just overview of 2020 and our plans for 2021. As a member of the National Main Street Center and Indiana Main Street Program, the organization is driven by the four-point approach: organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. We are committed to our downtown businesses, especially when COVID-19 challenges us to be more creative and have a Plan B and get some time C. So, 2020 brought us challenges, but we have many successes to celebrate as well. Couple highlights from 2020. We launched a new website. We have a new logo, new branding, new marketing plan. We partnered with our stellar community committee devoted to Decatur County, which is the gift certificate and gift card incentive program designed to generate income for local small businesses and helped our small businesses stay open during trying times. So, we're proud of that. The holiday walk was a drive-through this year. That was Plan C. But we partnered with W T R E and the hospital and were able to hand out over 1,000 treats to kids. And it was a successful event. Our streetscape project, we were awarded $14,429 from the community foundation. And these funds will be used to purchase planters, trash cans, wayfinding, parking signage, which some of you may have seen those already. So, we're excited to... This will make the downtown more functional and appealing for those who live in Greensburg and those passing through. So, end of the year numbers. We had 125 total businesses, 13 business expansions, eight of those were new businesses, five business closings. We awarded $10,000 in grants for three facade and building improvements. And currently, there are 20 vacant spaces or buildings available in our district. So, looking ahead to 2021, the focus is the business and the building owners. We are looking forward to learning from the challenges this past year and safely being able to host a farmer's market, holiday walk, and continue to support the business downtown. With doing education, we are hosting merchant meetings each month, providing creative solutions to assist business owners in implementing marketing strategies and network opportunities. Enhancing the first impression downtown, this is something that's very important to me as the Executive Director. We have revamped our facade green application process to allow more opportunities for applicants to be awarded money throughout the year. Currently, there are five businesses in the process of making facade updates and enhancements to their buildings. I'm hoping this will be a chain reaction and others will want to make improvements as well. We revamped our micro loan programs. Partners with First Financial and First Federal to provide a low-interest fixed rate loan for businesses in the district. And this loan can be used for any business-related expense or expansion set to roll out this month. The farmer's market is moving back downtown. It opens May the 7th. And the new thing this year, we're going to start Fourth Fridays Downtown. This is something that every Fourth Friday of the month during the farmer's market season, something is going on downtown. We have music acts already booked. It allows businesses to stay open later, hot specials, kids' activities, things like that. So, the idea behind it is to generate a buzz that there's something going on downtown at the end of every month. So, we're excited about that. In closing, on behalf of Main Street Greensburg, thank you. The contributions and support from the city allow us to continue to help downtown businesses thrive, bringing our community together, and make sure you've had a place. So, we're excited for 2021 and can't wait to see you downtown.
Tanya's done a great job over the last year, really through it all, and has been a tremendous leader part of that. And it's been good to get to work with her. Any questions for Tanya?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize, David. I skipped over you, David Starkey, with the redevelopment commission update from Reedy Financial. It is part of an annual requirement that we receive an update based on the RDC. So, good evening.
Good evening. For those who are coming, my name is David Starkey. Nice to meet you all. Like Mayor Marsh said, we're just going to run through this financial update really quick. It's more of a formality than anything. Once we run through it, we will upload everything to Gateway and that reporting requirement will be met. I'm going to hit just high-level topics. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them now or after reading. I'll stay back in case you want to talk about something. So, I'll just go ahead and try to answer it. In front of you, you'll find the financial update if you want to follow along. So, the very first page we'll hit, Page 3, is just a list of all the annual requirements for the RDC. We help them with all of these requirements to make sure that they're submitted on time. It goes into detail of all the statute and how we interpret it. So, if you have any specific questions on that, we can touch on that. The very next page, Page 4, we just have a overview of the RDC. These are all things that we input to Gateway, all the information about your TIF area. And as you can see, there's one TIF area there right now. We actually just created a housing TIF area as well. So, next year, when we come here to present, you'll see another one as well. Going on to Page 5, that is just simply the monthly cash balance of your RDC area, your TIF area. It breaks it down by revenue, capital outlays, your larger projects, your debt, and your other services and charges. And as you can see, at the very end of the year, there was a balance in the TIF of just over $2 million. Now, we'll move on to Page 6. This is your TIF area broken out. These are more your line items. So, you can simply see everything broken out there, your revenues from your federal or state grants to your TIF collections. And you did collect what we should be seeing, so that was always good to see. And then below, it goes on to your capital outlays. This is more your larger projects. And as you can see, a majority of the spending goes to Veterans Parkway. And then below that, you'll see your debt payments. And that is the other large section of your total spending. Those together make up the majority of it. And again, at the very bottom, you'll see that the end-of-the-year balance was just over $2 million. Now, we'll move on to the contracts page. This just lists out any contracts you have. We monitor those to make sure that the spending does not go over and just make sure that everything's in order there. Lastly, the Veterans Parkway contracts, that's what you see for PINDO, and that's Q4 numbers. So, we just make sure to get those updated every quarter so we stay on track there as well. And then finally, your last section, this is your debt overview. You have one bond that your TIF area's been paying so far, and there was a new bond issued at the end of the year for the housing project that we'll start paying on that soon. And then lastly, you just have any bond-related funds. And those are just some funds that we just kind of monitor to make sure there's not much really that goes on there for those first two funds. But the last ones, you can see, 803, that's your Veterans Way Project Fund that had 1.25 million come in and out. That was a draw on the bond and a payment out to a vendor. And the very last page, that is just a list of your parcels that are inside the TIF area. It's required by statute as well. So, that's there if you're just, you know, curious on, you know, what parcels are in your TIF, who owns that, it's got the taxpayer, it's got all the related information that you need or really don't need. But we make sure to get all of that in there so that you are all set for your reporting requirements. That's really all I have. If there's any questions, I can keep them now or I'll stay back after and just say hi if you want. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Up next, we have Sarah Hamer with the Building Commission, 2021-3, in discussion about a hospital annexation. Good evening.
Hello. So, yes, I'm presenting ordinance 2021-3 for voluntary castle annexation. We have the information in front of you. We should have the map showing the chief properties that the hospital purchased along with Emery Road. Both of those parcels were located in the county. So, we're looking to annex it into the city and along with rezoning it from what was considered an A1 in the county to a B2, which is what all the other possible properties is, is a B2. Just wanted to inform the planning community and they recommend that go before City Council property.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah about that? If not, we take a motion to approve ordinance 2021-3.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
We suspend the rules on annexation, or is that one that needs to...
I don't understand. I guess there's no rush to do that.
So, there's... I would say, I believe you can if you wish to suspend, because it's not related to money and there's no specific provision within the annexation statute that says you can't. So, if you want to, you can, but I don't know that there's a huge rush.
I don't think there's a huge rush. I don't get it.
And we'll just wait until next month. I'll give you the second reading.
Okay. Up next, 20... Yeah, we already voted on that. Ordinance 2021-4, rezoned at the St. Mary's property.
Yes. So, we have the St. Mary's property. You should have all that in front of you as well. We're looking to use the 206 South East Street. I guess correct. But that is a being purchased and that needs...
Yeah, there you go.
Towards the latter part of this month, is that?
The ball goes well.
Hopefully. Okay. By Evan and Emily Manship, and they are here this evening. And that was zoned as an R2 when it was the old St. Mary's Church and looking to rezone that as a B2 general business district. So, I will have both of them or whatever come up, or if you guys have any questions you want to ask them.
Evan and Emily, is that what you said?
Evan and Emily, yes.
Do you guys mind maybe just sharing with us what you're planning to do, or is that...
Yeah, absolutely. We can... We'll pop up there to the council later. Sorry, you can.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Evan Manship. This is my lovely wife, Emily. This is a project we've been working on for quite some time. My wife Emily's a 2010 graduate who went to a community high school. Been sitting at the St. Mary's Church for years and years. Her father's father's father was actually a member of the parish years and years and years ago. So, something that I was worked into by in-law circumstance, but followed love of the community, followed love of the site, and my background in real estate and business operations has really kind of paired nicely for why we're extremely confident we can serve the community as an event staple or venue, as a community staple in the city of Greensburg. So, could you talk a little about it a little bit?
No. Essentially, what I have just said, but just kind of briefly, it's a really historic site. There's a lot of stuff coming from my family and sentimental value, and I grew up going to school there and, you know, and attending church there, you know, until we relocated to the new St. Mary's. But essentially, it's a beautiful space. I always loved the idea of preserving architecture and being able to incorporate old architecture into, you know, new and day-new. So, we both want to make a event venue. You know, right now, we're just looking at the church. We are approaching the intact property, which would be the school, the church, and the used to be the education center, which is like the preschool and the... But we would just use the church at this point for an event venue, so weddings, receptions, business meetings, you know, bonding gatherings, things like that.
I think it'd be great to find a good use for that in our community and do something. I think I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we're all excited about some kind of opportunity like that, maybe. I just, I don't know all... Have you guys looked at, like, how many people do you think you're going to put in an event center here? How many people are you anticipating or...
This is the million-dollar question that we keep arriving at with our design team. We engage an architecture firm of Batesville Wells, from the Desweilers, our contract and for the same group who built the new St. Mary's. But this is still in process, so I hate to give a number that will be all in the future one way or another, but...
But there are certain constraints with, you know, with fire code and things like that, and the square code is a lot. And so, I went from architect, but there's an equation for if you're having seated tables versus seated rows. So, she... She's driving, I think, 250 around that area depending on the construction of the walls. And we really don't plan to do a lot to change. There's really nothing other than maintaining the structure and revaliding. It's basically theory. The inside of the church will remain almost identical. So, we're going to keep it big and open, going to be big and open, so it's going to accommodate large groups of people. So, we'll still have a fair amount of folks able to be in there. 250 is probably our max, just with the seating of the tables, if, you know, in case of work, grass table seating like that. But 200, 250, I would say somewhere around that.
I would equate 250 being the equivalent of those crossover SUVs with fit-eight people. So, that's the maximum capacity. We certainly don't plan on that.
Part of the reason I was asking the question though is I think there was a concern about possibly parking. I don't know if that's something you guys are working on or...
Yeah.
Okay. So, that was...
To answer that question directly, I have a predilection, updated plan on this. Our initial plan was presented earlier last month, on the 16th of March, I believe. We had 33 parking spaces slated, none of which are handicap spaces. We've since increased that plan to a grand total of 47 spaces that includes three handicap spaces, just by nature of getting created a way to kind of twist it around the parking alley access as well as driveway edge of the street. So, I have a predilection, I can leave it on my calendar, get to you now, so you can take it. That way, you're...
Well, I think, is it the VZA or somebody's going to review that later this month. I was just, I think they're talking about it, and that's not what's in front of us tonight, our... We're talking about the rezoning, but I guess I was just asking the question if that's what you guys are looking at and trying to figure that, if that's... Just asking the question.
Yeah.
Priority. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the Manships? We did have a really good conversation earlier this month with both VZA and the plan, so we'll look forward to that again this month. If anything else for us? Sarah, anything else on your side?
No, just looking for the approval of the zoning change.
Okay. Ordinance 21-4 is in front of you to rezone.
Make a motion to approve 21... Or 2021-4 on the first reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Becca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Is there a need to suspend the rules on that one, or is there...
Do you want to do that? We didn't do the hospital. Do you want to do that?
No, I'm asking if there's a need or if there's a...
Well, simply for the matter of closing timeline and make sure we're getting the church what we promised them, we're pushing toward the end of the month to have this happen. So, should it please the council, I think that'd be prudent on our end at least to make sure we can abide by our mutually binding purchase agreement with the church.
Okay. Chris, any issues with that?
No.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules by Jamie. Second by Becca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I make a motion and we pass ordinance 2021-4 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Becca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I make a motion and we pass ordinance 2021-4 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Becca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. There you go. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Up next, Brenda Dringer, Court Treasurer, with the investment discussion.
I would like to update the council on some of the investment. We talked about the $4,700,000 from last year, and I just wanted to let you know that we had gained $18,000, we're eight dollars from gaining $18,000 on that investment last year. I sent out an email requesting information for CD's rates and that found that where the money is at is where we're going to get the best investment from. So, we will be continuing with that $4,700,000, just in case you were wondering what we're doing with that investment. Okay? Also learned that, should we put any other money with that, we would get that same high rate of .25%. It's the highest I can find. Okay? And that's after contacting six different facilities to try to gain more money. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brenda? If not, the first thing I have for you this evening is a request from the Greensburg Community Schools. They are requesting that the city reimburse them $30,000 from our COVID money that we received. That is for general cleaning expenses that they've had since the COVID outbreak. They've also asked for $5,000 for the athletic department for the same reasons. They've submitted all of those financials to you in the packet. Part of this is substitute teaching, athletic fee, athletic losses, and general cleaning supplies. The county commissioners, I believe, did... I don't have that number in front of me, so I'm probably... But I believe they did half of what they did to the county schools. So, the county schools received X, Greensburg Community Schools received Y, and the commissioners, they've asked us to make up the other half. So, that's where this number comes from. We would have to do an additional reimbursement, or we would have to do an additional appropriation from the COVID funding that we received, which was 380-some thousand dollars in 2020 that has been put in a separate fund in Brenda's office. So, we do have that fund available, but it has not been appropriated. So, we would have to go through the entire appropriations process to do that. The schools are fine with the delay. They would appreciate the contribution. This evening is more of a, are you willing to do that? And if so, we will start the additional appropriations process for this dollar amount through the next couple of months to get that done. Any questions on the information that you all received?
So, there is enough money in that.
Yes.
And then if we still get money, yeah.
Yep. This would be one of our first major purchases out of that. We did do some reimbursements of things we bought to start COVID-out laptops and Zoom memberships and things like that, but the bulk of the funding is still... Is it a favorable recommendation to continue down the additional appropriation route for something like that?
From my point, I think it is. I think we'd also make some discussions about moving some of that money into professional services for some other things as well, the COVID funds from that same fund. So, maybe we can do that all in the same additional appropriations.
I think that would be one, so we will keep that. Okay. If nothing else, we will move on from that. Chief Stermer, anything for Fire Education Day?
No, just a reminder that we're kicking off at 7:30 in the morning. The State Fire Marshal will be joining us, giving some opening remarks as well, and we look forward to seeing everybody there.
Becca said she's very excited that it's that early.
Yeah. I am too. Don't worry. We'll make the same vote. Go make coffee.
That's right. Okay.
Real quick, not exactly Fire Education Day, but Chris Primmeyer did put me through your physical agility test.
I heard.
I think that's money well spent if we give them the money, if they make, what is it, like a level four?
Level four, level five, yes.
Yeah, that's money well spent. They...
I heard. I heard you had a good time doing that.
Oh, that was awesome. Yeah. So...
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, God. I was busy. Okay. The other thing on the agenda for this evening is the Greensburg City Council has an appointment to the Greensburg Public Library Board that expires April 27th of this year. We can... The person who currently holds that seat is Ms. Laura Jo Tebby. She is willing, according to a letter from the Greensburg Public Library, to serve in that capacity again, but it is your seat to fill. Point away.
I have no problem reappointing somebody unless somebody else has an issue, or somebody else...
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Laura Jo Tebby to the library board.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Jamie to reappoint Laura Jo Tebby to the Greensburg Public Library. Second's been made by Becca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There is nothing else, at least on my list. Jamie, you want to do an update from the boardworks?
Well, we approved some outdoor seating for the Carriage on the Square tonight. Chief Bridges brought us a BOLA wrap policy that we approved. And if you haven't seen that, that's kind of an equal... It's basically like it'll shoot out a cable that will wrap around a subject, and it's got little barbs, almost like a fishing hook, a little smaller than that, but it'll kind of hook into the clothing or... And basically, it will wrap them up. So, it's a way they can secure... There's a lot of videos out on the internet. If you look up BOLA wrap, B-O-L-A wrap, you can see some of the videos, and it's a pretty cool device, actually. So, we have five of them. I think you're looking to purchase five more. So, we approved a policy on that. We approved the promotion of two officers to a first-class officer as well. And then, we basically approved a statement stating that the police department followed all policies and procedures in a police-involved shooting that occurred in November of last year. Mark Claustro, Camper Kane, we opened bids for a 2,000 international dump truck, ultimately awarding a bid of $6,800 for the truck. And then Mark talked to us about heavy trash week being May 17th through the 21st. So, just being prepared for that. We had a discussion about an employee's request for unpaid leave, which was denied. And then we set up times for a couple of special meetings the next couple of Mondays for change orders, potential change orders for the work going on in City Hall. So, those meetings will be at 6 o'clock on Monday, the 12th, and then it was the 19th, Monday, the 19th. We talked about Fire Education Day, and that's pretty much it.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the Carriage on the Square seating?
Yeah, I've got pictures if you want to see whatever I thought about, but they're going to... They're talking about taking it, basically from like the door out over to the alley. But they're talking about taking it, I don't know, is it basically from like the door out to, over to the alley? It's going to come out from the building about, what is it, six feet out? It'll be, I got some pictures. Six feet from the edge of the, I'm sorry, from the landscaping.
Edge of the curb.
Yeah. I got, I got a map. I've got a map that'll show you some pictures here.
I got it. So is the seating going to go into the alley?
It's going to go to the alley, is what he said.
Okay.
I think it does go into the alley.
I thought he said it was going to have some, he owns the alley.
He owns the alley now.
So yeah, I think it's supposed to, my understanding of it is it's going to go from Gene's old building all the way down past the kind of the halfway point of the alley and back into the alley a little bit. But he purchased the other half of the alley, so it's not infringing on anybody. It's just, it's very similar, I think what he said was it's very similar in nature to, kind of like what's in front of the beach. Just it'll be a little bit more of a temporary nature, so it can be removed when it gets on.
I didn't get that it went back into the alley. I think it covers the front of the alley there, but it doesn't, the drawing doesn't really indicate that it goes back that way.
We've got that pretty nice spot, I mean, it's got a pretty good-sized little spot there in the alley that has to be utilized. So there's going to be a rail, all right?
Yeah, yes, it's going to be removable, but it'll be, I, they're going to bolt it down, but they'll have caps so they can take it out.
The round tables, the, is it here? The round tables that are in the.
I don't know. Those will be the same tables that he.
Are those?
Remain.
Remain?
Do you know the answer to that?
He'll have to have the six-foot clearance from the curb to the fence, and there should not be anything else out. Am I saying that right, Ron? Am I saying that right, Ron? So there's currently a couple of like little cafe tables and two chairs he has out on the sidewalk. I don't know that those will remain because I think he has to have that six-foot clearance from the curb to where the fence will be, and everything will have to remain behind the fence.
The ordinance required maintaining six foot from the curb. That's it.
Okay, any other questions for Jamie on that? If not, we'll take a motion. Anything else to come for the council? If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some leave?
Motion's been made by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's been adjourned. See everybody next month.